Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the September 11th, 2023 workshop for the Greenville City Council. I am Mayor PJ Connolly, and I will be presiding over the workshop. First, we'll call the meeting to order, and then the roll call. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Connolly?
I am here.
Mayor Prost and Glover?
Councilman Blackburn, present.
Councilman Daniels?
Present.
Councilman Bell?
Councilman Robinson?
Here.
Councilman Smiley?
Here.
Mayor, we have a forum.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the approval of the agenda. Madam Manager, any recommended changes?
No changes, this is in email. Move to approve?
Yes, sir.
All right, most of them made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. We are...we're good? Okay. Move on to new business. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The first presentation will be an update on our review and look at the commercial solid waste collection for the downtown area. I'll call forward Jonathan Abram, who is a senior manager with Raptalis for the presentation. Jonathan has made two prior presentations to the council. He'll provide a little background and then sort of catch you all up where we are right now. Jonathan?
Welcome.
Thank you. Good to be with you this afternoon. I am not from West Virginia or Michigan, so I hope I'm still welcome. So just to jump into a PowerPoint. So as the city manager mentioned, we spent some time with you all back in November of 2022, giving you all an update on the progress toward addressing some of the challenges in the Uptown area relevant to commercial collection. I want to provide an update in terms of what's been accomplished since then and what our immediate next steps are, and give you all a chance to ask any questions at this point. There's really a few key areas that I want to touch on. One, I just want to reacquaint you with the project, right? So what are we doing? What are the problems and challenges we were asked to help you all solve? And then I want to walk through an Uptown collection, RFP, process, response, and cost of service. So essentially, what we've done at this point is evaluated the challenges, identified a few solutions, moved forward with an individual solution based on some of your feedback in November, and have started to evaluate, okay, based on what we know, what are the impacts of the customers that we need to start collecting information about from the public? So I'll talk about what that looks like and next steps and over our timeline as well. So just in terms of project overview and context, just to orient you, I think everyone here knows Uptown, but in terms of, you know, the specific areas that we are targeting, we are really looking at the commercial collection process for trash and recycling in Uptown, which is...which borders essentially starts at First Street down to 10th. This map shows 9th, but it's actually the 10th Street, as well as the Dickinson Corridor, and it's bordered on South Pitt Street, as well as Reed and Bonner's Lane, as well as included in that area. So we're really looking at the collection process in this specific bounded area. So in terms of the current overview, right now, each of the business owners or property towners in Uptown are responsible for arranging their own collection for both trash, recycling, as well as grease for restaurants. And just to note, grease collection and grease traps are excluded from this process in conversation. That will still kind of continue to be arranged individually by the businesses. Most of the businesses in Uptown, just based on the layout, are using shared containers. These can be dumpsters at some of the primary public lots, but there are also carts, and there's a wide variety. And it really depends on, you know, what the geographic layout, how dense an individual area is. That really drives what kind of container can be used. Right now, collection frequencies are typically one to three times a week, depending on the dumpster type, depending on the cart type, and depending on the business. There are really three primary issues in Uptown. Again, just reacquainting you with the challenges. The first is litter. Now, right now, the private companies, the collectors, which are usually GFL and Republic, GFL is the primary hauler in the Uptown area, Republic also services a few dumpsters and a few carts, but not many. There are a few other smaller haulers as well, but it's primarily GFL. There's not much attention in terms of picking up litter around the dumpster areas, right? That's one of the challenges in the area. The other problem is, right now, there are businesses that are using containers but not paying for those containers, right? So this is a bit of a free rider issue, where GFL is trying to essentially turn a profit in the area, Republic are trying to turn a profit in the area, but there are some businesses that use the containers without actually paying for those. So what that effectively does is it increases the cost for those customers that are paying. They're effectively subsidizing those folks who are not, right? And that's a fundamental challenge, a fundamental problem that you all have asked us to try to address and figure out how to solve. The other piece is that pricing is not transparent, right? And this ties a little bit to the equity question as well, but there's not a clear cost structure from either GFL or Republic that tells an individual business owner, what's it going to cost for you to receive service for this kind of cart, for this kind of dumpster, on a day-in, day-out basis? So we want to create some transparency. We want to address some of the litter issues and equity issues. And ultimately, we really want to enhance service just in terms from a beautification perspective in the entire Uptown area. So we've really gotten the direction to think of this project not just within the lens of solving, you know, an individual discrete problem relevant to dumpster areas, but how can we use this process to really address some broader challenges and add value to the users of Uptown, to both the property owners, the business owners, as well as the residents and visitors who use it on a consistent basis? So this is...we want to just kind of highlight a few examples of challenges. Really, there are three areas: Hodges Lot, Rose's Lot, and Mergens Lot, where there are kind of fundamental challenges in terms of litter, in terms of folks who are disposing incredibly high volumes in those individual areas, propensity for illegal dumping in some of those spaces as well. This just highlights a couple of areas on Hodges Lot, some businesses that are pulling up every Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night, pulling up pickup trucks and dumping these containers in the dumpster areas. Quite a bit of varying approaches about how things are disposed there. So we want to create some consistency and address some of the litter issues that ultimately result. Rose's Lot as well. You can see just a couple of examples of what happens, you know, Friday morning, Saturday morning, Sunday morning, and what some of the spaces look like, right? So there's a conveyor belt after the nightclub establishment's close of disposal as bars close, as entertainment areas close. And often, what you have is a disposal process that requires that somebody spend a great deal of time and energy the next day cleaning up that area, or it becomes a compound problem. And that somebody is typically city staff, okay? So there's a great deal of energy, a great deal of resources that are already being dedicated on a reactive basis as these issues...
You've never seen this anywhere in any other city ever.
This is unique. No. No. This is a common issue. It's a fundamental problem that you're going to run into in any sort of entertainment district. And one of the things that we've done is done some best practice research and, you know, based on our own experience elsewhere, to try to identify some ways that we can start to address that. And many of the recommendations that we've offered are informed by, you know, how do other communities do this to address some of these challenges? Again, just highlighting some of the problem areas, this is just a random assigned day, right? So you can see dumpsters pretty quickly become ugly. That's the best way to put it. Difficult to look at, eyesores. There are certainly odor issues, especially in the heat of summer, right? So being really intentional about keeping these areas tidy really creates and enhances the sense of place in the Uptown area. So that's, again, kind of a primary goal.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
For this background. With the free rider issue, locks are one way that I know it can be addressed. And when we're looking at our proposal, if I remember correctly, what we're going to do is have a fee that everyone pays, which means there are no free riders. So that's sort of two sides of the coin of the free rider issue. Do I have that correct?
That is part of it. So, you know, one of the things that communities will sometimes do is restrict access. That can be really challenging and administratively cumbersome to maintain, right? We are proposing ultimately a consistent fee structure that's transparent, that everyone would pay, and we'll kind of get to what that looks like at this point. That eliminates some of the free rider issues, and the billing process, which I'll touch on later, we'll address that as well. But that doesn't fully eliminate code enforcement or sort of nuisance enforcement compliance issues. So we'll want to talk about that as well, because there's also folks who aren't in Uptown, who aren't business owners, who come to these dumpsters and utilize them, and that's really part of the illegal dumping question that needs to be very intentionally focused on from a nuisance enforcement perspective.
Right.
So that was the kind of context of the problem. So as you recall, when we came to you in November, we really presented the outcomes of Phase 1 of this effort. And really, Phase 1 was, you know, look at these problems and help us identify options to create some consistent service levels for the business owners, the customers, the public, right? So they know what they're getting and have a clear path to resolve issues when they arise, create a transparent fee structure, and eliminate some of these litter and eyesores issues. So we went through a very, you know, engaged process. We talked to a lot of stakeholders, a lot of business owners in the Uptown area. We benchmarked with other communities. We did a lot of best practice research, you know, how are these communities solving these problems and challenges in their own areas, and laid out a few options for you. As we laid out those options, ultimately, the direction we received was, let's look at the option of contracting with an individual hauler to service the entirety of Uptown. What would that look like to create a franchise agreement to solve some of these challenges? And that's really Phase 2 of the project. We've been hard at work at Phase 2 since June of this year, starting actually earlier in terms of the prep work. But really, there's a couple of kind of key activities. The first is developing a request for proposals. So we worked with the city to develop an RFP, submitted that RFP, or issued that RFP, and had haulers in the area provide a response to say, what will it be to...what will it cost to provide collection in this area under a certain set of performance expectations, and very clear process in terms of transparency, in terms of customer engagement, and how can the city support this to solve some of the challenges? We've received those proposals, and I'll kind of go over the details of that. And then we built those into an initial framework in terms of what would the cost be, and what is the customer impact? So not just outside of cost, but what does this mean to me day in, day out in terms of how does the process change, right? And that's really what we want to pour out to you today. Our next steps, really, after getting your feedback, is to go to the public with us, to talk to folks in Uptown, to get as much feedback as possible, to understand how does this compare to your current cost structure, because we don't know the current cost structure, because it's proprietary information. It'd be great to know that, but we don't. And so we want to engage with folks to understand how does this compare? And then ultimately, make a decision about whether to move forward selecting a vendor, continue the current process, or some alternative in between, right? And then ultimately, move into implementation. We won't be pursuing an ambitious goal, I think, of December 31st, although the optimist in me feels like he can do it. But I think we want to be really intentional about the public engagement piece and give you all plenty of time to deliberate and consider that. So that's the kind of Phase 2 and where we're at. Any questions before I jump into some of the detail? Okay. So what I want to talk about now is just the cost of service overview and the customer impact. And really, there's sort of three primary drivers of cost for service in this area. The first is the collection cost charged to the city by the contractor. So if you were to select an individual contractor, it's what do they bill you just for the collection work, okay? The second cost is city staff, right? So what does it take to actually manage this contract, to provide enhanced customer service from a billing and just from a straight customer service perspective? And how do we make sure that the area of Uptown, dumpster areas, as well as the surrounding areas, is clean, is consistently clean, and that you all are able to provide consistent attention to? So that's really a service enhancement piece, and you really can't look at the franchise and collection piece without adding the staff to properly manage that contract, right? So those two, to us, are two sides of the same coin. The third bucket of cost is displacement cost for existing haulers. So one of the requirements of state law is that if you move into a franchise agreement or you take over a service area that's serviced by multiple private companies, there is an obligation to compensate them for any displaced hauler for six months of their gross revenue in that specific bounded area, right? So what's that cost? What does that look like? So that's another bucket to consider. So in terms of collection costs, we issued the RFP in June of 2023, and again, this was just for the collection work. There were really two contractors that have experience in the area and that could respond. We received one response from GFL. Republic did not bid. Now, we had a follow-up conversation with Republic to understand why. The fundamental issue is they would have to staff up an entire operation and be able to essentially purchase new equipment or have folks drive consistently from Durham each day for collection, which really made them not cost competitive from their view, so they didn't bid. So we have one firm to respond, one set of responses. The response, the RFP responses include very specific expectations around customer service and performance expectations. So part of the task of the city will be to manage that contract, to manage those expectations, and to make sure that there's consistency in service from the public's perspective, from their experience, okay? GFL ultimately provided annual collection amounts. So what do we bill based on what we know, and what do we charge by type of container? So if you continue expansion into Dickinson, which you undoubtedly will, as you add containers, there's a clear cost structure to the city that determines what that charge will be. And then we built that into a rate model. So we've essentially taken the work, taken the volume, and built a solid waste rate model that's a working model at this point, because we want to ultimately get feedback from the public, okay? And I'll show you what it means to the customer. I'm not going to share the collection cost itself, because it all rolls up, right? So I want to show you the final cost here at the end, or at least the draft. The other piece is the Uptown service enhancement. So this is one where, you know, it's what are the resources that you need to properly manage the contract and to add sort of additional beautification value, both in the dumpster areas and Uptown in general? And there's a few kind of key staff areas. So we've assumed staffing and benefit costs, as well as non-personnel expenses, for really kind of three position categories. The first is a billing specialist. We're assuming a quarter FTE. So I know many of you have gone through budget conversations before. FTE means full-time equivalent position, okay? So a quarter of one position will be dedicated toward the Uptown bucket of work and is assumed in the Uptown cost structure. So that would be one position. So that would also add some value to the broader residential billing process, right? There would need to be a supervisor, kind of code enforcement position, who would enforce the nuisance rules in the area, who would supervise the contract and be the contract manager, but also provide oversight for two custodial beautification positions to provide consistent service that's rapid, right? Whenever there's an issue in Uptown, but also to have consistent process of how it's cleaned, how it's pressure washed, how do you maintain the look and appearance to make sure that it continues to be an attractive area where folks want to spend time and ultimately spend money? So we also assumed all the vehicles and pressure washing equipment, those things that are necessary to support this work. The fundamental value here is it enhances that customer service piece, it addresses that Uptown litter issue, but it's also really frankly necessary, if you're going to move to a franchise agreement, to make sure as you take on the customer service responsibilities, you need to have the capacity to be able to manage that. Displacement fees. So as I mentioned, contractor, the city would be required to pay six months of that collections revenue. Right now, GFL is the largest collector in the area, right? So the displacement cost is actually quite minimal. We've gotten information back from Republic at this point. It needs to be adjusted, but this wouldn't represent a significant cost. So fundamentally, our recommendation would be that it be funded from existing fund balance in the refuse fund, sanitation fund, but very small. Now, if GFL is displaced, that's a different story. It would increase the total cost, the operation. So before I...so those are really the three main kind of cost factors and cost drivers that we've considered. So what does it mean to the customer, okay? So there's really a few process changes that I want to highlight. There's account activation. So what do you do to set up service? What happens if you're delinquent or you're not paying, right? And then what's the customer service experience? So account activation, one of the fundamental values of moving to this approach is that the billing process is managed by the utility, by the electric utility. So you will essentially have your bill for service, your bill for sanitation service on your bill that you pay, your electricity, your water, your sewer, your stormwater, okay? What that means is if you don't...go ahead.
So that one quarter FTE is going to be a GUC position?
No, that will be a city position, because ultimately, setting up the service, it will happen through the city. The city will then have to coordinate the billing process. So you need essentially someone to coordinate between GUC, but also to field calls from the customer to get things set up. So ultimately, under this model, the GUC account holder, the business owner, property owner, whoever owns the GUC account in that particular resident, will set up service through the city. The city will then coordinate with the utility and the hauler to make sure that the service is provided and billed. The fee will be transparent and very clear based on container type and frequency, right? That's ultimately the goal, is to simplify that process as much as we can to make it clear. Payment and delinquency. So again, collection fee is itemized on the monthly GUC bill. Failure to pay results in the electricity being shut off. So there's an incentive, right? Especially in July and August, to make sure that payment happens. So this is really kind of the stick piece, honestly, to make sure that that free rider issue, the equity issue, is addressed. And then customer service. So, you know, any customer service issue? Yes, ma'am?
I just want to talk about the equity. So how are we balancing to ensure that everyone is paying their fair share? How is that being done?
How are we balancing to make sure everyone's...
Like their fair share? How is that determined?
So I'll talk about that a little bit if you have time.
Oh, okay. Okay, no, not at all.
Just in terms of structure, okay?
Thank you.
So the other piece is the customer, the business owner, has a very clear point of contact in the billing specialist and in the contract manager to resolve issues when they arise. There's a point of service for customer service that is not clear and doesn't clearly exist right now. There are very clear expectations that you all will manage as a city in terms of how you respond. That creates a level of transparency and a level of customer service that this process, this process change, this contract change really creates and allows. So adding some resources there and creating space to clean and beautify the city. So those are the ways in which the average customer is going to experience this, okay? Now we move into cost and how you balance equity. So there are all kinds of different businesses, right? And we need to make this as simple as we can. But what we've done is essentially taken the total cost, taking the current collection processes in place, to come up with a draft billing structure that allows folks who maybe aren't disposing much to be able to pay a smaller amount than those bars that are backing up pickup trucks to the dumpsters, right? So that's...we really tried to build a structure that allowed for that. So right now, what we're looking at, again, this is a draft generation-based fee structure. So, you know, your average sort of office location would pay $75 a month for basic collection. The medium sort of retail space would pay 150. The more commercial spaces would pay about 275. Now, the institution or specialty or the big restaurants would be a $450 minimum. Now, what we want to do here is create some additional tiers, and part of what we want to really engage in with the public is understand what you're paying now and develop an approach that really tries to make this as equitable as possible, but also acknowledges there are fixed costs that you all have to collect in order to be able to do this work, and we want the process in Uptown to essentially be self-sufficient, fully funded. So looking at this cost structure, which we're going to test and vet with the public, it's about 50% city cost and 50% collection cost. This is really what the breakdown is here, okay?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Thinking about offices, for instance, I work in an office downtown, and there's probably, I don't know, 15 to 20 people that work in my particular office. There are other offices where I bet there's not but three to four people, and I'm sure you've already thought this through.
Yeah.
Can you talk a little bit about how that'll be sort of mapped out?
So part of the value of the billing specialist is to really assess some of the, you know, you can't...I have a friend who says there's two types of people in the world. There's lumbers and there's splitters, right? You know, I tend to be, I like as few categories as possible. That can in a sense simplify things. Some people, usually scientists, like as many as possible, right? So we're trying to find somewhere in the middle. There are inevitably going to be larger institutions, kind of specialty spaces, where if you've got a few people, we'll look at volume and we'll have a cost structure that makes it as equitable as possible. If it's a small office, the $75 the minimum to have a once-a-week collection of a cart, you know, we want to keep that pretty consistent. What we really want to also balance for is really large office buildings, or I look out the window here and see the hotel going up, right? That's if you imagined each of the rooms in that hotel had a cart, right? Think about what that would cost. So I...1500, right? So 1500 a month, right? So we want to reach some balance in there and also create a little bit of flexibility.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
How do these fees relate to what the current company charges for their container? For example, if you had the smallest container available from that service provider, what would it cost that business to have exclusively at their location?
I can't tell you that. Okay. So the challenge with that is it's proprietary. We made an effort to try to collect that information and ask for, you know, share your cost structure. We did not get that. Yeah.
We have one that's about $40, $35 to $40 a month. That's about what it is.
Yeah.
This one cart, you know, GFR comes by, whatever comes by once a week, takes it away.
Yeah. So, you know...
Is it a rollout cart?
Yeah. Which is kind of in line here, if we think 50% city cost, 50%, you know? So part of what we want to do, is a big part of our next steps, is to, you know, essentially, we intend to have some public engagement. I'll share a handout that folks can take home with a QR code, so they can look at their bill and compare it and add some feedback if they can't do it. Because the challenge is, nobody really brings their bill to these things. So we want to give folks an opportunity to kind of think about it as well. Yes, ma'am?
I'm concerned.
Okay.
I just think that per month, this is going to be a lot, if you look per year, for businesses who tell us they're already struggling. I just think it's a lot. And I'm not sure, how do we determine these prices, these particular prices?
So basically, the three cost buckets that I referenced, so the collection cost that was bid by GFL, so that's reflected here. The city cost, which is portions of city staff, your custodial folks, the equipment that would be necessary to staff that operation, right? As well as administrative overhead and sort of factors included in the rate model for that. And then the displacement cost, which I mentioned we've not included here, because it's a small amount, we recommend it be funded with fund balance. So this is the amount that's required to cover the cost of the operation we've laid out.
And the minimal of that.
That's correct.
I also think it's pretty... What despises is a higher standard, right?
That's right.
That you're not having to send your employees out to the trash cans to clean them up, because the cleanup and the maintenance is included in this.
That's correct. It builds the resources, yeah.
And I think right now, what we've got is, you know, a lot of mess and a lot of people not paying their share, and, you know, and I think that one of the implicit goals of this is to do better, right?
That's right.
Doing better is going to cost more money.
Fundamentally, this is about addressing a fundamental issue and enhancing service to Uptown, which is incredibly important for many reasons, you know, outside of just the solid waste space. I also say, there's a pretty significant amount of effort of city staff that does this work, and it's one thing to think about it in terms of, you know, you all spending resources, but it's also really important to think about the opportunity cost of the important city programs that you all have prioritized and funded, that those folks aren't spending energy and time on, right? So, you know, this also has the advantage of creating some additional capacity in other areas. That's a little harder to quantify, but it's a benefit.
But if I...if you have...
I'm just thinking, so it's not...
Sure.
If you have a business that's now going to be paying over $1,000 per year additional, what are we going to say if they say, if this is what, it's going to save me this kind of money? I'll clean the dumpster. Excuse me. How will we address issues like that? Because that's a lot of money.
It's not additional. I mean, they're already paying something.
Some of them are paying nothing.
Well, then...
Right. I mean, I get it.
We don't want to incentivize that.
If you're going from low, let's just start at the low. That's going to be like $900 a year. So you're talking additional $1,000.
That low figure, I can tell you, is low, lower than what you do if you do commercial for a small container.
And it may be, but we're starting off like high for some people, again, that are already struggling.
Well, so that is...that is a part of the reason why we want the public engagement, is because those questions are super important for us to bring you feedback on what folks view as their actual experience. So there, there may, you know, we, we had some anecdotal reports and this will be a savings for some folks in terms of what they're paying now, right? So they're, they're, but that's all based on anecdotal information, right? We don't have a cost structure, so we need to engage and understand what does this really mean? What's the cost comparison? Talk to folks about what that looks like and come back to you all with, with a more informed perspective on the public's, the public's perspective.
Thank you.
When you added your calls... Did you assume one employee or two to power wash and their salaries? How'd you, how'd that make into this cost assessment?
The two, in terms of the two people? So there's a, there's a small amount for a pressure washing contract that consistently on a monthly basis would pressure wash the dumpster areas, okay?
So you do it private?
Contract managed by the city, yes. The two, but, but then you would also have essentially, essentially two positions, less than, less than, but one FTE, one full-time equivalent. So they would partially be funded by the resident, by, by the solid waste fund, but also the, the, the other half would be funded by the kind of Uptown...
To do what?
Collection cost bucket. For additional cleaning, for additional dumpster area maintenance, for sidewalk maintenance and pressure washing, for additional work that's more consistent than a recurring contract. So you have, you'd have it overlapping. The reason you have two is to provide consistent weekend coverage as well, right? That's, that's obviously kind of the area that's...
So not just the power washing, but somebody that...
There's a broader service, absolutely.
Because I was thinking, there's a bunch of people who power wash, they'd probably love you to contract, be cheaper for us as a city to have them and to maintain an employee.
Absolutely.
Jonathan, just to point out that some of this work might be on the weekends, might be somebody to come in early in the morning and just pick up litter that might have been left over for the night before. As we get, as we...
Not just the power washing.
Right. So that, because, because how the, how downtown looks on a Saturday and Sunday after a big night out is very different than how it looks at noon on Monday.
And we don't want to wait till Monday to clean it up.
Right.
I, I have some concerns. Even though we're, we're having, they're going to have people who are going to go in and, and come, come behind the people and clean up. The problem is, is that I've been, since we've been doing this, I've been looking at different places like, you know, restaurants and all over town and seeing that they have the same green dumpsters and things like that. And if you really ride around Greenville and look at the whole, look at the different restaurants, the areas are filthy. I wouldn't want to, when I see one like that, I will never eat there again. Because something, you know, if, if we're going to, what happens if Uptown Greenville says, "Well, you were making us do this, but I was at this restaurant that has the same services and theirs was just strolled all over everywhere." In case, in fact, I went to a restaurant last weekend, it, they had like three, two or three of those things and they were filthy, there were stuff laying all around. And so if they're not taking care of theirs, how, you know, it's going to be hard for us to say, "Okay, you guys, Uptown Greenville, you got to take care of everything because, and you got to pay all this money for people that actually do the work." And which, which our restaurants are not doing and other businesses are not doing their due diligence to keep their areas...
Outside of Uptown.
Outside of Uptown, not doing their due diligence to keep their areas clean at all either.
Yeah. Well, one of the issues is if you see that, if you see the, the trash behind a specific restaurant that owns its own parcel, then you know who to blame that on, right? You know, you could, like you said, you can say, "I'm never going there again because I know that that restaurant doesn't keep, keep its own lot clean." I think one of the challenges you have uptown is that, you know, there's seven or 15 businesses sharing that same one, so you really don't know who to blame. So I think you're like, more likely to have a market reaction there than you are here. If there's a market reaction here, it's going to be against the entire, the entire community, which is the, the councilman on, Lappert mentioned the tragedy of the commons. Everybody's having to use the same facility. And so if everybody abuses it, everybody suffers.
And one thing I'd add too, I, I think that's a really interesting question, a really interesting way to look at it, is that we do have, downtown is a very concentrated area and it's also, unlike other commercial spaces, it operates like a public space. There's a certain kind of public character to it that other spaces don't have. You may look at, say, the mall, for example, it's not a public space, but there's sort of the mall community and I imagine there's some shared costs at the mall. So I think when we look at our downtown, it operates like a public space and so there's shared costs.
That still doesn't address the problem that I see going on all over town.
Mayor, if, if there is behind a restaurant and that's on private property, we're able to use code enforcement to go and address nuisance issues at a dumpster.
Right.
The difference is because these dumpsters downtown are on public property, we, we don't know who to do that enforcement action to. So and, and what ends up happening is we, and several of you have sent me pictures. I'll say, I, over the years, I've collected some pictures where somebody will call and say, "Have you looked at this dumpster?" And we'll go out and we'll just be appalled at the condition that there's trash everywhere, those that have deposited stuff in the dumpster have missed the dumpster. I mean, we had, we had an employee once who just kept cameras on them and we would note the employees and then we'd go back and visit the businesses. But it's harder to do in those places where the dumpsters are on public property. The intent of this is to say to everybody who works down, who, who lives and works downtown, "You all produce garbage." So you all, everybody needs to, in, in some equitable way, pay for the disposal of the garbage. And with that, we're going to roll in a couple of extra services to make sure that we address the cleanliness issue related to our town.
Right. And it still is a cleanliness issue because even, these restaurants are considered private as well. So, you know, there should be some type of guidelines. If we want to do Uptown Greenville, it should be for everywhere because there are some of these restaurants that locate it right in communities, in housing communities that don't keep their things clean.
Right.
And as case in point, there's a Chinese restaurant right up the street by me, which needs all kinds of code enforcement stuff going on. And I've, I've addressed that, but they continue to do the same thing. I've talked to the owner, I've talked to the, the manager and everyone.
Right. And we can certainly go out with code enforcement staff to address some of those code enforcement issues on private property. It just makes it more difficult downtown. And downtown itself functions in a slightly different way than some restaurants or other establishments that are on, that are solely on private property. The mall, for example, that's all private property. It's all up to those folks to address it. Downtown just happens to be a, a hodgepodge of public and, and private property. Those dumpster pads happen to be located on public property and, and, and in some cases, we have people who misuse and overuse those dumpsters and we have people who misuse and overuse those dumpsters and dumpsters and they don't pay for them.
And that's the same with, with other restaurants, with other restaurants that we have in, they're in, in communities and we want to keep the community clean and it's impossible to keep the community clean, we need to be looking at how we're going to enforce that as well. You know, they are in our city, their business that's in our city, so we should have some say-so about how they keep their business looking.
And we do, and I'll let you go on, Jonathan. We do, in terms of new development, typically we'll require hot water at a dumpster pad that allows people to, to be able to power wash. The dumpster pad, a lot of times will, will require a dumpster enclosure that is gated so people don't have to drive by and see the dumpster. There's some development regulations that we can put, that we put in place certainly for new development.
So again, these are kind of draft fee structures. We're still finalizing some things, so again, the, the numbers will change, may change slightly, but not dramatically. But we want to, kind of our next step really is to, as I mentioned, get this in front of the folks who would be impacted by, by the changes, right? So, you know, on, on kind of phase one, we spent a lot of time with stakeholders in one-on-one meetings, we met with the Uptown Business Association and held a public meeting. We're going to replicate that public engagement approach here September 25th, 26th for some of the initial work. There will likely be some follow-up, uh, public engagement that happens as well. Again, we want to, to essentially kind of see how, how folks would experience this change, take their feedback, determine if there are any adjustments we need to make, either from a cost structure perspective or from a process perspective, right? You know, just in terms of, you know, how service is activated and managed. And really highlight some of the service improvements and get a sense from folks whether they feel like those things will add value or are there any, any additional adjustments they want to make. So with that feedback, we'll want to come back to you all in the fall with a recommended path forward to update you on what we heard relevant to the, to this work and, and plot a, plot a course forward in terms of implementation, should you choose to, you know, pursue this path in, by, by the middle of, of next year.
Have you considered meeting with the, I guess it's called the downtown group now?
Oh, it's called the downtown group now.
I don't know, I go with what they're, I guess they're...
Downtown partnership.
Downtown partnership, was it?
Meeting with them and how do you intend to get notice out to all the stakeholders?
So part of, one of the, one of the great things is they all have Kevin's cell phone number. So, so we, we had a good, kind of a good setup ahead of time during the last session. We'll set up a lot of individual meetings. The goal is to have a, an open public meeting at the library. We'll try to do that on the 25th. If we need to shoot to do that in October, we can do that to provide a little more capacity.
Is it feasible to put just like a slip notice in the bill they get every month for utilities, just to say, "Here's your bill, by the way, we've got a stakeholders meeting." I don't know how much trouble that is or how feasible it is. We could probably check with JSC.
Our other option, which we have done before, is to just hand carry notices out to all the businesses and we can certainly do that as well.
I'll leave sample. Yeah. Just want to make sure everybody has potential interest.
Yeah, we don't just want to post it in the newspaper.
Yeah.
Everybody reads the newspaper.
They should.
I really stuck my foot in my mouth.
Put the foot in there.
Okay? So those are, those are the high points. That's the, that's the update I came prepared. I can update you on other things, I just won't be prepared, so.
Well, I was just saying, I didn't say anything in that last round, but my biggest concern is the overall cost. I think the cost is very high. I mean, I really do. I mean, when I think about it, we were talking about different ways of handling it and the fact that it's on city property and multiple businesses are all utilizing it. Well, you know, I'm in a, my office is in a condo, or like an office complex and we've got different designated areas that are all completely fenced in and I've gone back there sometimes and it is a wreck. And I have no idea if it made the mess, right? There's stuff all shredded over there. And I put on gloves and I cleaned it up myself and, because I took pride in the fact that I don't want people walking by my office and saying this is a direct reflection of my business. And I would hope that some of the businesses downtown would think the exact same thing. And we do have this great organization, this downtown partnership, that we just gave an extra $50,000 to, to be able to promote and help our, our downtown area. It would be great if they would take the initiative to maybe talk about that sense of pride in our uptown district. You know, I mean, it's just, it's just something I'm thinking of, because what I'm thinking about is when I look at those numbers right there, guess what? They're going to pay those fees, right? And who's end, who's going to end up paying for it? Their customers.
Yep.
Right? Because their customers are going to have to pay more for whatever good or service that they're coming down for. So if ultimately everybody's going to have to pay for that, that's going downtown, you know, we probably need to be looking at ways to bring down barriers as opposed to building up barriers in the downtown area. My concern is if you make it so high, great, it's going to look wonderful, but who's going to be down there to use it? Just a concern I have.
How do you capture the people who ride for free?
Who are totally...
The ones who ride for free, they're the same ones that won't clean up.
Totally agree. And that's why my idea of contacting our downtown partnership group and saying, "You guys should take ownership in this and figure out a way to make Greenville downtown a better place." I mean, just my personal opinion. I mean, something that, it's a good project for them, it's a good way to get all the stakeholders involved and figure out a way to get around it. Not everybody's going to participate, but that's up to them to make that, make that determination of, of what needs to happen, how to clean it up. I mean, the city can't keep fixing everybody's problem, right? We're here as a government structure, we can't keep fixing everybody's problem.
Well, I think it's important to realize that at the end of the day, it will be our problem, right? I mean, if, you know, these, if these, you know, trash facilities are, you know, get bad enough, then we're going to send our personnel out there and, and clean them up. And if that cost is not built into the cost structure of the people who are in the area, then you're basically asking citizens outside the area to subsidize, you know, the operation of businesses in the area. And, you know, that's not fair either, right? If, if the, you know, if the, if the challenge is being created by the, if it is a cost of running a business in, you know, in this area in this way, then that cost has to be borne by the people who are doing it. It's not fair to...
But they're, but they're just going to pass it on to the consumer because they're going to be paying a higher, a higher price for that. So everybody that goes to the restaurant and the restaurant's paying $700, $800 a month for trash services, they're going to subdivide that out for all the meals or whatever they're serving there and everybody's going to pay that. So, I mean, it's going to, either way, they're going to bear the cost of it.
Well, except in this case, it's the people who are dining in the restaurant rather than the people who are...
We want those people to dine in the restaurant. We don't want them to push away and go elsewhere because then we're going to have the same problem where we can't fill up spaces in the downtown area.
Well, I think, well, the first thing is just get feedback, because like the lowest price, I have a unit and there's four offices, one of them's closed, the rest of, I think probably eight people, we pay more than the lowest price for our container on our side. So I think we need to get some...
Per business?
Per, per month.
But I mean, but per business. So each one pays $70, $70.
More than $70, that's our...
You guys need to go explore something because we don't pay that.
Well, I know this, and I appreciate your, because I think when you talk about costs, we are talking about they're already paying costs. And I think one of the things, you know, Rick and I have talked about the tragedy of the common and free rider matters. These are things where, these get at the, the reason government exists, which is when you have a situation where there is no penalty for free riding, then you, that's when government steps in and does something. And that's kind of what we have here. I didn't get that MPA for nothing. When you have a situation where there is no penalty for free riding, that's when you actually do need to step in. And again, these are on Greenville property, uh, city property, it's really a public space that's in hand, so I, I think it just kind of comes with the territory.
The government has seconded everything.
If you're going to put your trash can on the, on the people's property, then the people are going to have something to say without what you, now you treated.
Tell them to take it off the people's property then.
No.
You want to talk about being a problem.
And about downtown, about, and one more thing, about downtown Greenville, I think downtown Greenville partnership, its goal is to rejuvenate and have activities and to, to really focus on that aspect of our downtown. I think if we force them with the responsibility of keeping dumpsters clean, I feel like that's really out of their purview, although I appreciate where you're coming from on that, it's just not their purview to do that.
Well, I mean, I could throw a dump, I could throw trash out the back of my, my, my door. I mean, I think it's a direct reflection of who, or what our business would be like if I did that on my own. So I mean, if they don't take pride in the fact that they can take their trash to the trash can, put it properly in there and dispose of it correctly, then I think that's a problem the business are, or their, or the enforcement to their employees that are actually dropping the, the materials off there.
So what we were hoping for the council to do today was to give us a thumbs up to continue to proceed down this path, to have it, to keep engaging with the property owners, with the business owners in the downtown, to have a real conversation about what, what price points might look like, what services might look like, is this something that they might be interested in? We, we hear this frequently, certainly during the summer, it's worse, that's the worst time of year.
I, I think it's a great idea to get feedback because what it may do is spur the group downtown to come up with some action on their own, the time police are on, so we don't have to go in and police it for them. But I would certainly like it to go forward because that way it just kind of, okay, this is your shot across the bow. We've got this problem. We're trying to find a solution. This is the city's solution they're kind of looking at. We want some feedback from you and see what you propose and what you come up with and see what happens.
Definitely.
Didn't hurt.
Um, I've got a question. Did we discuss any sort of, like, when you go to a dump, you pay per dump. Did we, like, discuss any, like, key fob swiping where per swipe you can dump? Or I know that kind of gets in the weeds a little bit, but I'm just, you know, curious because there's going to be folks who say, well, I don't use it enough to pay this. And there's going to be, you know, so just curious about that.
Sure. Uh, so we didn't explore those kinds of sort of technological solutions. Um, we have, we have, uh, uh, explored limited access or restricted access. Part of the, part of the challenge will be setting up and determining, um, what your billing category is off on the front end. Um, we want to, again, we want to be as equitable as possible, but we, we have to avoid creating 30 different billing categories, right? So, um, so we're looking for a balance between, um, both equity and kind of balance and price structure. Those, and again, those, those offices, those folks that don't dispose, um, there's a baseline fixed cost that needs to be recovered. And that charging that minimum cost to those folks, I think, is the goal, right? Uh, but those who are producing a lot of quantity, um, based on occupancy type, based on, um, based on square footage to some degree, that would have, that would have a, have a higher rate impact.
Have you seen solutions like that in another community where they like swipe and some, something about their, not consumption, but their usage of it is, is charged rather than.
Yeah, I haven't personally run across that. Um, I could certainly sort of look into that, but, um, that, uh, that would require an, an additional level of administrative, uh, focus and capacity as well. So when you think about implementing those kinds of solutions, um, you know, that's, that's part of it. It's nice to know because I think one of the challenges is there's really no reliable benchmarking data to say, this type of business produces this type of, this amount of waste, right? And it can vary, um, from one, one bar to the other or one restaurant to the other, right? So, um, but one of the things that was discussed, uh, we haven't built it in, um, was some, uh, some incentive for sustainable practices, those kinds of things. So there's, there's opportunities to implement those kinds of things down the road. But I think, you know, focusing, what's the core problem? What are the, kind of what's the best approach to sort of solve the problem now within, within, within this context? It's really where we're landing.
Hey, I like that. I just came up with a billion dollar idea. Do, uh, you do a key fob and you have to have the key fob for it to open up. You got a scale underneath it. You can actually determine how much.
That's kind of what I was saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you've got to capitalize that system too.
The challenge is.
That's what they do with the, that's what they do with the dump. You go in there and you dump it and you come back and they weigh you how much you go back.
But the problem is the type of debris because you get charged different, whether it's metal, whether it's wood, whether it's concrete debris.
Yeah, but they're not going to be doing that downtown.
We all pay a yearly fee for the privilege of having our garbage taken to the landfill. So this gets back into kind of the public use of this.
Well, I know, but I'm talking about, we're talking about, you know, making sure that there's no freeloaders or anything like that, or that are going over there. If you don't have a key fob, you can't go and dump it.
But you know what they'll do? They will, if you don't have access or you don't pay into the system, you just dump your garbage right there and you get into just kind of basically what we have.
And if we got a camera over there, then we charge them.
Enforcement costs money.
Not if there's a camera there.
It is important to point out that the camera itself is not going to stop the illegal dump anymore.
Which is fine though, we can catch them.
Dump and then we're going to have to station an employee at a desk who's going to have to figure out who it is that's dumping at 11 o'clock at night and then go visit with them and say, here's the video of your employee doing that. So there is a, there will be a cost to, a significant cost if, if that is the, the, the method we use to enforce.
And the council can determine what the violation would be, right?
Right. But, and then, and then we would have to determine how that violate, how it is that we would collect those violations.
You charge the person that dumped it and who are they going to, who are they going to go back to?
The customer.
No, they're going to go back to the business owner.
You got to collect it. You give a dozen of them.
You get a thumbs up. That's it. That's exactly right. So I, I'll, again, what we're hoping to do from the council today is get your, um, thumbs up that we continue to have this discussion. Okay, there we go. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation.
So our next, um, presentation tonight is to, um, is to hear from Don Autagon about Greenville Terrace Park improvements. What we're hoping to do tonight is get sort of a thumbs up from the council about one or two alternatives that they're interested in us improving, um, following through for Greenville Terrace. As you all recall, this is a project that is funded with the ARPA dollars. Don?
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers.
Before we get started.
Yes, ma'am. I've got an update for you. Give me one second. Uh, so before I get started with Greenville Terrace, I do want to provide an update on Town Common Plus Dream Park, uh, community building. So both of those projects are currently still on schedule, uh, which is, which are great. Uh, Town Common right now, uh, as you see, the intended timeline, uh, Task Core 2 is in progress. It includes the development of construction documents for Concept B, which is shown, um, on the screen. Uh, timeline is shown there. It's January. We'll get updated on probable cause. And our plan is to provide an update at the council planning session at the end of January. Uh, in March, we'll receive 60% design review and then hopefully, uh, wrap the design up in June 2024. But updates will be provided, uh, during that timeframe. For Dream Park, again, this is the, uh, this is showing the south patio facing Chestnut Street. Uh, renovation design is currently 95% complete. Uh, we're meeting this week with HH Architecture to finalize the construction documents and make final, uh, tweaks to it. Uh, timeline for this is to advertise construction bids, uh, next month. We are hopeful to bring a construction, construction contract for council review, um, in December, uh, with construction beginning January, you know, 2024, weather permitting. So I put January, February weather permitting and there's an eight to 10 month, uh, construction, um, timeline for this, this project. And I'll pause there. Any questions about Town Common or Dream Park? And we'll provide updates along the way. So Greenville Terrace, uh, improvements, um, this is just a, this slide here just reviews the design elements that were approved by council. Uh, a few months ago includes improvements to the Barnes E. from Taff community building, uh, lighting benches and trees along the walking trail, a replacement of similar playground equipment. Uh, this basically replaces a smaller piece of equipment and a replacement with a younger, um, for ages two to five. Uh, we're having designed for parking lot improvements, which includes, uh, paving and expanding the parking lot, uh, reservicing of the basketball court and landscape improvements. And it's important to, to note that actual project improvements selected will be dependent on the construction budget, uh, which is currently $840,000. And design services so far have cost, uh, $160,000 for this project to date. Uh, this shows existing building, uh, layout, uh, shows the exterior there in the top two. And that bottom photo is of the interior kitchen, uh, which, um, has been redesigned through this project. Before I should, uh, provide two of the options that have been provided by HH Architecture, I just wanted to review with council the current park usage. Uh, it does host a summer camp for ages five to 12, uh, that hosts 40 participants per week. Uh, through this process, we do not plan on, uh, pausing that camp. We will have the camp take place even, uh, when construction starts. Uh, so we do not want to displace those kids in the camp we have there. Also is senior programming, uh, outdoor basketball free play, uh, community outreach events, which you see pictures from our truck and treat and also our back to school event, uh, there on the bottom. Uh, also it's important to note that this, uh, community building and the picnic shelter is our most rented facility in our park system. It averages about 125 rentals annually, um, anywhere from a, a capacity of 175 to 200, 250, uh, individuals, uh, which brings in about $28,000 of average annual, uh, revenue, um, which is a, uh, important piece of this because we want to try and make sure whatever design we pick, we want to make sure we, we build it at a efficient rate because, uh, we've already, um, are getting, um, rental requests for next year that we're having to, to hold off because of construction plans. So now I'll kind of talk through, um, each of the design options. So we work with HH Architecture on two different options. Uh, one being to expand the current floor plan, uh, that'll be to expand the current assembly space by additional 900 square feet. Uh, this will increase the capacity, uh, from one of approximately 150 to 225 and allow staff to accommodate larger groups. Uh, this option also includes other interior improvements, uh, to the building, including sound improvements for the assembly room, uh, and flooring improvements. Uh, option two is a building addition, uh, involves approximately 1,200 square foot addition located adjacent to the current building and create a separate room with its own entrance and a unisex bathroom, restroom. Uh, the new space would also, uh, would have a capacity of 36 to, uh, 65 individuals depending on use. Uh, just to compare to the two, um, capacities, 150 would be with, uh, excuse me, 200, um, for the assembly room currently would be with tables and chairs set up. Uh, 300 and the plus would be with, with no table and chairs set up. Uh, 35 in the new building would be with tables and chairs. 65 would be with, with no tables and chairs, just to kind of provide a comparison. And both of the options that I'll, I'll review here in the next few slides, reconfigure the existing kitchen area, add a storage room and provide entrance enhancements. And today, as, uh, Ms. Wall has mentioned, we are looking for a thumbs up of your option one or option two as we move forward. Uh, so I'll go in more detail of option one. Uh, again, expands the building using the existing porch, uh, that's shown there by arrow. Uh, it includes additional patio space. So we are taking some of the patio space by the, uh, existing, by, uh, expanding the building, but also we're adding an additional patio space because it's a very, uh, popular feature with our rentals and our programs. Uh, it adds 900 square feet, as I mentioned, uh, increases the capacity to at least 225. Again, it could be more than that depending on how the building is set up. Uh, add storage and, add storage, uh, for tables and chairs, which we currently don't have, which again, allows for the space to be used for our rentals. Um, and it adds a defined main entrance, uh, with a cover and windows in the assembly room, which I'll show in another, uh, slide. And what you see here is just a existing, uh, site plan and yellow there shows the existing or the, the expansion of, of the building. Next slide just shows the floor plan of the building. Uh, no, no major changes to the restroom at all. Um, you'll see the reconfiguration of the kitchen and then the addition of the storage area. And again, the addition of the storage area just opens up your assembly space more because right now we're using the assembly space, uh, for tables and chairs to store. Yes, ma'am.
Um, before you move on to option two, with this one, I, I'm thinking about covered porch space. It's always, as you mentioned, seems like it's very important whenever you're doing outdoor activities. And it looks like, does this eliminate that front?
It does not. Actually, we're going to replace it with additional patio space.
Okay. Covered patio?
Covered patio, yes.
Okay.
And when you say warming kitchen, what?
Yeah, they call it a warming kitchen. It's where a caterer can come in, bring in, um, uh, their, uh, catering plates with the warming, uh, components on the bottom. With no, no oven. It's just a refrigerator, microwave.
Okay, yeah, that's perfect.
Yep. That's a good question. Thank you. And then this shows, uh, and this is what really kind of excited staff. It, it really gives this building a main entrance. Uh, currently be the Barnes E. and Taff building does not have a, a main entrance that shows where you go in. This really kind of shows where, uh, those who are coming to an event, uh, where the entrance is. Um, and this will include, of course, a, a updated sign, uh, and include hours of operations on our, our building. A way for, uh, the community can call us to have questions. So really enhances the building, um, and, and makes it stand out. Similar to what we did for EBS, uh, as far as creating a main entrance. And then option two, um, again, option two adds a additional square foot, uh, 12, approximately 1,200 square foot building. Uh, again, the capacity is listed there, includes, this also includes storage for tables and chairs. Um, and it also includes a covered entry, which I'll show in another slide. Um, and then with this, it does take up, uh, some additional parking. Uh, so if this design is selected, uh, the parking lot will have to be reconfigured, uh, to allow for additional parking to accommodate the capacities. And this shows the, so floor plan for the addition. So it keeps the current, uh, patio, um, covered patio. And then, uh, what you see, the gray area there, that's the actual, um, expansion. And then the, in the corner is, is the, uh, the restroom. And the, the, uh, both sides here, both the, the assembly room and the, uh, expansion will have access to the storage building with this plan. Yes, ma'am.
It looks like, just at first glance, that the first plan makes the main room larger and able to accommodate more people. Whereas with this one, it's almost like you've got your choice of rooms. You can use the large room or you can use the smaller room. So that might draw different kinds of events or different kinds of possibilities for renting it.
Yes, and with the, after speaking with staff and getting feedback from staff of the way the building is used now, uh, it's most likely that because of the limited parking and also the, the parking that we have now plus the, the user of the park that you use the outdoors instead of just renting the building, um, I'm not sure we're going to have two events at the same time or two rentals at the same time. Um, so both spaces probably can't be used at the same time in this case because of the limited parking. But it does provide two options. Yes. Yes, ma'am.
In reference to, you said it's going to take some parking, but also there's a walking trail there. What's the proximity there?
So the walking trail, uh, is going to stay where it is, um, exactly where it is. There's no change.
Right, but I'm saying, so I'm thinking in my mind, there's the building now and then there's a space.
Yes, ma'am.
And you're saying that space is going to take some parking away, right?
Yeah, so this space here goes into the stone drive that's currently there, um, just, you know, close to the community garden. Uh, so it's going to be in line with the community garden, but, so we'd probably have to move the parking.
I know what you're talking about, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. We'd have to move the parking, um, closer to the community garden, more than likely. And then this, yes, sir.
I was saying, do you have a rendering of what the building will look like with this option two?
Yes, right.
Okay, ask me a question too quickly.
No, no, you're good. Uh, so this shows, uh, both entrances of the building being covered, um, shows a sign, uh, with the Barnes E. and Taff. So this will be the main issue of option two. And so we, we, the staff discussed, uh, in our, in our recommendation, uh, based on everything we talked with HH Architecture, plus looking at our current programs, events and rentals, uh, our, our recommendation will be option one. Uh, it provides a lot more flexibility for staff to host larger community events. And you saw one of the pictures we had was of the back to school event. Uh, that was at capacity. Great turnout and we want to see these events get larger, um, as we, um, continue to increase to, um, and activate Barnes E. and Taff and Greenville Terrace. Increase, of course, increases the capacity of the building to accommodate larger rentals for families and family reunions. Um, it does meet the need, the community's needs of additional multipurpose space, uh, which was indicated by the public at, at a public meeting, meeting held October 25th. And based on probable cause estimates, option one can be completed within budget where option two is projected to cost approximately $250,000 over our current budget. Um, and I'll pause there and, and be able to answer any further questions. And from here, we would ask for a thumbs up of option, our recommendation is option one, but.
Option one. I think I have a question though. Um, when the staff, when the design was being made, was there a reason that they added two? Like, were there benefits to option two? I'm for option one, but were there benefits for option two that they extended that?
If we were able to really expand the parking, I mean, and take up more of the park, it could be, but I think we don't want to take too much of the park with, because a lot of the park space is used. So, I mean, we're kind of limited on where parking can go. Um, so that's what kind of held us back on option two.
Okay. And also with option one, you, you're looking at the track out there. I mean, ideally one day, I'm not a parks planner. Don't want to take anything away from Mark, but.
I'm shocked.
I know, really. But one day, it seems like you want to see Greenville Terrace and that walking track perhaps integrated into the larger greenway system going. I don't know how you'd get across the, you know, the highway, but, um.
Well, it'll go towards the Boys and Girls Club eventually.
Okay, yeah.
A parks planner, Martin, I would agree with you. Um, he definitely is looking to expand, uh, our, uh, pedestrian trails. Does a great job and that's why he's not here now, because he's probably, he's, he's had another meeting this afternoon. But, um, but yes, and he's done a great job managing his project along with the other ones, um, including the, the two I mentioned before this, so.
So going over to Boys and Girls Club, is, is there any way to get a, you know, with our north-south axis that is sort of taking shape now, which is awesome, but where you go, start at the Town Common and going north, any way it could ever integrate into that north axis?
Not this time, I don't think so. It'd be very challenging.
Many years in the future. Tunnel. Here is some, you know, we do have the ability with an earmark to go across the Town Common and to connect to River Park North, but there still would be some very significant improvements that have to be made beyond that. But, you know, that, um, that greenway system continues to evolve and expand and as we move forward, we can. But what I hear from, see from council is the idea that we're going to go with option one. We've got some thumbs up. Okay, we're going to go for, for time's sake, we're going to go forward and do a quick presentation about Coastal Plain League and update on that and talk a little bit about Gassman Stadium.
We've been working on the last couple of months, a very fast moving project, I would add, um, is the Coastal Plain League and improvements to Gassman Stadium. Uh, so before I talk about the improvements to Gassman Stadium, just kind of want to provide a brief update on the Coastal Plain League itself. Uh, so there's a lot, a lot, a lot going on behind the scenes right now. Um, of course, phase one construction, uh, will begin here shortly. Uh, we have a construction contract in hand and circulating for, uh, signatures. So that'll begin very soon. Um, Coastal Plain League is searching currently for a team general manager. Uh, they're hoping to hire and make an announcement early October, uh, for that. Uh, once a team manager gets hired, a lot will take place, a team name solicitation, uh, phase two construction, uh, will, design will finish. And I'll talk about phase one and phase two, uh, here tonight. Um, so phase one and phase two construction will be going along at the same time, uh, through now, into February. Um, March, uh, team announcements could be, uh, roster, uh, team name, game schedules and also promotions during that game schedule. So a lot of, all this stuff is being talked about now with Coastal Plains. It's just about taking one step at a time, uh, but more to come with that. And then May 23rd is when Coastal Plain League, uh, their league starts. When the official start date here in Greenwood, we don't know yet, but it'll be shortly after May 23rd.
That's fast.
So, yeah, it's. The mayor will go on the first pitch and May 25th, he'll have red finger cuff surgery. Is that the?
You wouldn't believe how, how hard I throw stuff.
Um, so moving on to, uh, the Gassman Stadium improvements, um, as I mentioned, uh, the permits are to be completed in two phases. Uh, this is being funded by $1 million, uh, overall budget. Uh, phase one include realignment of fencing, relocation of bullpen and new batting cages. Uh, phase two includes additional seating, new concession area and additional restroom. We're not going into detail for both of those. Uh, so phase one includes realignment of right field and left field fences. Uh, so what this does is this will bring in the current, uh, right field and left field fence in closer to the playing field, uh, which takes away quite a bit of foul territory, which is, is not a bad thing for, uh, you know, for our coaches, uh, for Rose High in Beirut. So the foul poles are, foul poles are right here. So basically they're taking it from the dugout straight to the foul, foul lines.
Okay, so they're widening it.
Yeah, well, they're, yes, they're widening it, but they're taking, bringing in the.
Sure.
Bringing in the, uh, the fence post. So, and what they're doing there, and I'll kind of talk through phase two. What they're doing here is making room so we can add additional seats and stands.
That's good for a picture and wide on the side right there.
Yeah. Yeah.
All about the offense for the.
That's, that's very true. The, uh, one thing this does, this will do is remove the, uh, bullpens. Uh, this will relocate a bullpen so they're actually out, out of plans here, territory. Uh, currently they're inside planned territory. So this will move the, uh, bullpens inside, uh, which again, provides, uh, more space for us to move that fence in. Uh, also provides, uh, relocating the current batting cages and building a whole new set of batting cages. Uh, this will buy, provide a whole lot more flexibility for players as a. This will provide a whole lot more flexibility for players, as a wider batting cage, more space for practices, was not, not only helps Babe Ruth, not only helps James Rose High School, but also helps for our summer camps that we organize as a city every summer. And this is the overall phase one concept design. Just shows where the bullpen, I mean, excuse me, where the batting cages and bullpens will be on the right field down the first base line. And I'll pause there and just basically say that no more, this is not going to impact any parking, not going to impact anything else outside the stadium, it's just kind of impacting the right field side and the first base. And then the next slide shows where phase two construction area will take place. And it's important to note that phase one will be done by February, so there's no delay to any regular seasons where it comes to James Rose High School, or it doesn't impact the Pitt County Greenfield Babe Ruth League. And then phase two will be being constructed coinciding with the league. So we'll be able to play baseball as we're also constructing phase two. This has been done many times in our city, especially with starting stadium, they played games while starting stadium was being built, so we do have some experience in this, and don't seem this be, would not be a problem at all. Now, phase two is a little more complex, so I'll walk through that piece by piece. This shows additional seating concept, it shows an additional 361 seats, essentially a grandstand that'll be brought in, along with three women's restrooms, three men's ADA restrooms, and eight women's restrooms. So what we're doing here is we're trying to increase the capacity to 1,500, and when we do it, it triggers more restrooms that need to be, need to have for the stadium. And both of these, or you see here, you might look at them and say, like, shipping containers, and they are actually shipping containers. We've used this out at Wildwood and, as before, in one of our projects there. And so what this will be, will be a shipping container with restrooms in it. It looks a lot, I don't have the concept, at least what it shows when it's completed, but they do look pretty fancy, and they're actually, they're done very well and very cost efficient. And this is down the first base right field line.
Michael, we should have done that at the Town Common. Could have saved us about $300,000.
I love this town.
How much more cheap?
They're, they're very cost efficient. This shows additional restrooms and a concession area right behind the new grandstands that are proposed, includes two concession stands and then additional family restrooms. And this shows a more zoomed out view of all that put together. There's a lot going on with this slide. Mammoth Building Contractors are, who are designing this, they're out of Kansas, and they are, they're doing a great job, which we would meet with them weekly, so again, fast-paced, we're doing, trying to do a lot in a little bit of time, but they've been very receptive to our, to our feedback. We also are getting feedback from our, our local Babe Ruth organization, so a lot of feedback, but it's just, it's moving very fast. And then I will note that phase two amenities will be determined based on remaining project budget, and we hope to bid this out in the next couple of weeks. So in mid, in mid, early October, we should have a price for the total project. And then I'll take questions. This just shows, the top picture shows currently what Gassman looks like with the batting cages, and then the bottom shows what it will look like. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Yeah, I have a quick question about the bathrooms. Will they always be shipping containers, or is that just to get us started?
So they will always be shipping containers, but they'll, they'll look, once they're done, if you walk in, you will not know they're shipping containers. I mean, they're just, they're very professionally done.
Okay, I'm surprised when you said Wildwood Park, they're shipping containers?
Yeah, we're designing one right now.
Oh.
For through, yeah.
I was going to say, that's amazing.
Might do that at your house, huh?
Welcome Center has a shipping container.
You sell the pine trees up there in front of you, don't you?
Look, it, I love them.
Is there any, any concern with not being able to get some of these improvements done before the season starts?
So phase one, I mean, February, as far as the Rose High?
Well, I guess, my first thing is before the collegiate season starts for the, the summer league team. But then I guess my next question is going to be, what if there's a rush, are we going to interfere with the high school season?
Yeah, so right now, based on our construction plan and design documents, any construction that takes place would not impact the, the season at all.
So, so they're probably going to have to do the modifications to the actual field, like, right away before the season starts?
Our goal is to have those completed by February 1st.
Okay.
Because Rose High will start practicing in mid-Febuary, so we have a two-week cushion.
I was going to say, that's pretty close. No, no concerns about that?
No, no, no concerns, because a lot of the works, it's just moving in fences, a little bit irrigation, change in irrigation.
You know it's harder than moving in fences.
Yeah.
Despite climate change, we make it snow.
Oh, my God.
We haven't had snow in.
We feel, we feel pretty good, we feel pretty comfortable it be completed.
It's not impossible.
It's great, it's a great question.
It's going to have a lot of snow.
The priority will be on doing, on making the field improvements, so that we will not create a barrier to Rose, to the Rose season. And that's the commitment that we gave the local team as we started talking about bringing this team in, is to do everything in our power to ensure that they got a season. And I, I think that Don and Michael both know the importance, and the staff really know the importance of keeping that on track.
They will have the fence by the time.
They will have the fence.
Even if Michael's out there holding it up.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I can't wait to see Michael out there.
If we got to install ourselves, they will have.
Digging post holes.
I don't know about that, man.
So I'm just curious, I'm not a baseball expert like some people here in this room.
Actually, I'm an expert there.
You are, alrighty, alrighty, but when you talk, you, you say you're making the foul area smaller, is that right?
Foul ground, yeah.
Yes.
The foul area is smaller, so that means it.
See how wide it is right there? Like, from where the fence is, see that side? If you basically go from the right side, looking at the right side over there, so you're going to just close that gap in there, because it's a ton of space over there.
Yep.
As a pitcher, you love that, because there's more area, somebody hits a foul ball, but as a hitter, you want a smaller space, because it gets out of the stands.
And the fans like to be closer.
So it'd still be a foul, it's just going to go in.
That's great, yes.
I think that's.
Are we changing the rules here, or what is happening?
No. Changed the game a little bit there, Gassman, but it's, it's a good change for, this is